I'd like to welcome you to the board meeting on this November board meeting on this third birthday. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and please know that all board members and the superintendent are present. And if you would, at this time, join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this time, if you're able, would you stand with me, please, if we could share the pledge of the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. And I'd say is to adopt the agenda. Mr. Querry made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hurd, second. All in favor, let me know what's up with your hand. All board members were in favor as the agenda is adopted. And under Communications, under Item A is Recognitions. And the first is Garrett County Schools Standalone Office Equipment Support Staff of the Month.
This month's recognition is for Ms. Melvina Price. So she'll come up? Melvina Price is the Food Service Secretary and Menu Planner for our district. Her role as secretary is to provide support to the Food Service Director and all managers. In her role as menu planner, she ensures that the menu served is compliant, cost-effective, and meets the nutritional needs of our students. While she brings eight years of food service experience and many years of clerical expertise to her position, much of her extended knowledge of food service has been obtained since arriving in our district. This can be attributed to her willingness to stay in a constant state of learning and training and orders always provide the highest levels of support. Ms. Price has a unique passion for school nutrition. Not only has she earned a Level Four certificate in school nutrition, but she continues to educate herself daily on proper meal crediting and the regulations that apply to child nutrition. She is in continuous communication with each of our kitchens to ensure that the proper food and supply items get ordered weekly. She is also greatly involved with repair and replacement of our kitchen equipment. Further, she spends a considerable amount of time tracking our USDA commodity entitlements and making sure our managers are aware of when a delivery drops at the warehouse and is available to order. Her invaluable support as Food Service Secretary enables our nutrition staff to make sure that our students are properly nourished and ready to learn. Her role as menu planner provides the nutritional support that our students need to grow, develop, and have academic success. This makes Melvina Price a great choice for the November Support Staff Person of the Month. Congratulations. Our next recognition is for Garrett County Schools Whole Lot They Love Teacher of the Month. This month, it's Mr. Ron Denson from Garrett Middle School. Mr. Denson has dedicated himself to becoming a leader for the students at Garrett County Schools. As a deeper learning cadre member, Mr. Denson is striving to improve himself as a teacher, to challenge students to think deeply about the content and learn how to better communicate in today's world. Mr. Denson is a supportive team member and demonstrates his leadership abilities within his department as a partner of his team and collaborating to improve the US history curriculum at GMS. Garrett County Schools and Garrett Middle School is fortunate to have Mr. Ron Denson leading and teaching. Thank you, Mr. Denson, for your hard work and your dedication to the students of Garrett County. Next are Students of the Month for Garrett County Schools and Farmers National Bank. From Camp Dick Robinson, Cole Johnson. Cole is a third grade student at CDR. He arrives each morning with a positive attitude and a love of learning. During whole group and small group lessons, Cole is willing to share his thinking and to be a fair listener to others who are sharing. No matter which seating group Cole is placed in, he works to be a kind teammate. He really shines at exhibiting our cause, expectations, which are to be prepared, to have an awesome attitude, to work hard, and to show respect. Congratulations, Cole, on being the Student of the Month for CDR. Next, from Lancaster Elementary, is KJ Garner. KJ is a third grade student and is the first one in the classroom every morning. He always comes in with a smile and is eager to help and learn. KJ's sense of humor, positive attitude, and willingness to help others makes him well-liked by all his classmates. As teachers, we respect how respectful, self-motivated, and persistent he is every day. We're so glad that KJ is part of our classroom and school. Congratulations, KJ. From Paintlick Elementary, Peyton Robinson. Peyton is a third grade student and is a great addition to Paintlick. She's such a hard worker in the classroom. When given a task, she gives it her all. You can always depend on her to be doing what she's supposed to do. She's such a great example for her peers in and out of the classroom because she models what a Panther should be. She always has a positive attitude and is respectful to everyone. Congratulations, Peyton. Next, from Garrett Middle School, is Aiden Jennings. Aiden's teachers express that he is a joy to teach and witness his love of learning each day. He stands out among his peers. He's exceptionally responsible and conscientious for his age. It's not unusual for his teachers to witness Aiden helping others with learning. He's a gifted learner, top of his class, and willing to challenge himself. Congratulations, Aiden. And from Garrett County High School, Michael Condon. Michael is a senior and has been in JROTC for three years. He's earned the rank of Cadet Lieutenant Colonel. He's active in Beta Club and National Honor Society. He has natural leadership ability and strives to be successful at the next level. He plans on attending the University of Kentucky to earn a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering and continuing in the JROTC program. Garrett County High School is so proud of Michael and we appreciate his service. Congratulations, Michael.
Thank you all very much. Item B is the South Bay Decision Making Niche from each of the schools. And I hope all our board members that had an opportunity to look over those, that is for our information. Item C is audience comments. And I'd like to read from our Board Policy 01.421 concerning public participation in open meetings. And according to that policy, there is a minimum, not 20 minutes, of 15 minutes for public comment. And also, public comments are not public conversation. So I think there are eight, and I think all eight, unless I'm wrong, are going to speak on the same thing. Is that correct? You're right. You each have two minutes. And that's going to go over in 15 minutes. So I'm going to start with the order.
Can we reduce the amount of people so that those of us with longer speeches?
I suppose.
Okay. All right. Okay. You can call them. We'll just let you know first.
Okay. All right. The first one is Mary Tack.
I think we're gonna, Mary's gonna let somebody else go, so.
Okay. The next one is.
I have emailed Connie about a PowerPoint I do have on the USDA. Is that something that I could give to Mr. Stone? No? Okay. Well, I've printed copies, so I'll just pass it out.
Yes. So what's the time? I mean.
How many are there?
We have four.
Four.
If you allow the 20 minutes instead of 15 minutes?
No, we're allowing 15 minutes. And so that's four minutes.
I'll speak.
Be fine if that's all we get.
We're gonna just allow more people then?
Okay. I'll speak quickly. So if you'll flip, I've just thought of policy and family engagement. The first thing I want to talk about is the school safety plan. There have been possible policy violations, and I'm going to explain those a little further. So if you flip to the next page, you can see the letters that were sent home by two of our elementary schools. And I've highlighted specifically, and it's hard to see up here, but I will send you a copy of the PowerPoint. That both of the reasonings given here on the PowerPoint or on these letters goes due to the new safety guidelines. Okay? If you flip to the next page, the correspondence from a school board member here, it's very clearly stated that that decision was made between the superintendent and the school principals. So now we're going to move on to the law or KRS 158.162. It says, "Each local board of education shall require the school council, or if none exists, the principals in each school building too. And it's develop and adhere to the practices to control the access to each school building." So that actually belongs to, the way I took this, to the school councils. I know that in the law or the new safety guidelines, when we asked about that, they said it was referred to the Senate Bill One. And the only line in that bill, other than resource officers, is that any visitor has to be checked, their ID has to be checked. That was the only Senate in that Senate bill. So we're talking about visitors. So that's something that should have been reviewed with the school council, the decision-making council. The next one is KRS 160.345. It says, "The policies adopted by the local board to implement school-based decision-making." If you look at C, it's the school safety plan. So school-based decision-making is in charge of the school safety plan. Moving on, I feel like I was not able to be here at the last board meeting, but I got to listen to it online. And I noticed there was a shift. We weren't talking about safety as much when we talked about family engagement. So just to make sure I cover that, if safety isn't what we're worried about. If you flip, I have the comments that Mr. Stone made, just to kind of say that I think, he said, I think, I'm just scooting to the bottoms since I'm on a short amount of time. I think last night showed a great example of what happens when we're able to keep the focus on instruction during the day and do the celebration piece after hours. And if you flip, I had a correspondence from a board member. It said, "As you know, the priority of the school day is to provide quality instruction and ensure safety for all students." So I feel like now we're starting to move towards, we're really just worried about keeping instruction during the day. So I just want to point out the policy on instruction. So if you flip to the next page, KRS 160.345 says that the school council shall be in charge of assignment of all instructional and non-instructional staff time, determination of use of school space during the school day related to improving classroom teaching and learning, planning and resolution of issues regarding instructional practices. So just, and then we have more. I'm going to skip the next page just due to time. Let's go with the family engagement policy. As a Title I school, we, or a Title I district, we receive funds that are specifically meant for family engagement. So our district policy that I looked up online, if you flip to the next page, says that both the intent of the board, it is the intent of the board, that parents and family of participating students shall be provided with flexible opportunities. Flexible, that means we all have different work schedules. Some of us work third shift or second shift, and we can't come to the evening things. So this should be flexible for parents. So we can't, in my opinion, we need to have some conversations about what that flexibility means. But we should have flexible opportunities for organized, ongoing, and timely participation in the planning, review, and improvement of the. Is it time? Okay. Well, you all have the rest of mine. Just, I want you to look at what's possible when you get a chance. I have two suggestions of ways we can focus on instruction during the school day that still involves parents.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Angie Milburn.
I think I opted out for the other.
Oh, you opted out. Jessica Wilkerson?
I'm just gonna go, actually, Danell Valantour is on the list, and she has a really sick kiddo tonight. So if it's okay, I'm gonna speak, but I'm Danell's back, not mine. I'll skip mine.
Danell.
She just wants me to read others.
Oh, Valantour?
Yeah, Valantour, yeah.
Okay, so, were you gonna speak Danell then?
Yeah, if that's okay. Sure, sure. So Danell is a mom of two, and I met her actually this summer when our boys played T-ball together. Her oldest is a second grader at Paintlick Elementary, whereas my kids go to Camp Dick Robinson. And so we have a lot of things in common. We have little boys, little girls. Unfortunately, another thing we discovered we had in common over playing T-ball was that we were both really sad about the memories we have been able to make or not been able to make with our kids in the Garrett County School District. Like many of us, Danell is frustrated, confused, and sad about the state of meaningful family involvement across Garrett County schools. I'll share a little bit about what her family's personal experiences been at Paintlick. Back in the spring, her little boy was to take a field trip to Maywoods, which is a large outdoor nature-type place. She was surprised when the form said that no parents were allowed to go because of COVID. So she called Maywoods herself and was told that parents are certainly welcome and always have been. And in fact, there were no restrictions in place about COVID or anything else. She called to inform the school, and she went on the field trip anyway, at a public place. But she said she felt like an outcast the entire time. Instead of being a welcome and excited member of her child's school experience, the only field trip she's been able to take with them, even off school grounds at a public place, she was made to feel like a burden and a nuisance. She has also not stepped foot in her child's classroom this year. This is the middle of November, and she has no idea about the space where her child spends the majority of their weekdays. I personally was shocked, as a Camp Dick Robinson parent, to learn that she is not even offered the option to come in for a parent-teacher conference. It's all over the phone. So actually, phone conferences are all that she's been offered for his entire elementary school career, three years. Imagine sending your child to school every day and not even being able to envision what their desk looks like or how big their cubby is. Imagine discussing your child's strengths and challenges with the person that is on the other end of the phone instead of across the desk from you. Even back-to-school night is held mostly outdoors with a quick run to drop supplies off at a classroom if you're lucky. She says this is really hard because she works in events and marketing and is able to participate as a member of the public in many events near her employer in Madison County. She's welcomed into those schools, and her child is not even enrolled there. In fact, she drives by multiple schools, our neighboring county, in our neighboring county, on her way to work, and she sees their updates on Facebook about how they love when families can visit for programs during the day. She says it is taking all she has not to withdraw her child from Garrett County and not to enroll her other child when the time comes to a place where families are viewed as assets and not liabilities. I know I speak for her and many others when I say that those kindergarten graduations that never happened, those first-day-school dinners that were made worse when your child was taken from you on the sidewalk instead of being allowed to walk them in, the misinformation and the lack of opportunities to experience their school days, it all makes for memories that are tinged with sadness and regret. Many of us are questioning our decision to enroll our children in these schools where it's becoming obvious that we are not only not valued, we may actually be seen as burdens, going to be included for one in the bare minimum. So I want to say, I want to end by thanking Danell for allowing me to speak on her behalf, and I hope her little boy feels better. I want to thank her for sharing her experience as a parent of Paintlick Elementary because I think this has been construed sometimes as only a Camp Dick Robinson issue. And I hope this makes a difference. Thank you.
Annie Baker.
Amy.
Amy, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Before I speak, I have sent a handout from one of the other ladies who is not speaking, but asked me to hand these out. That's okay. Actually, y'all just want to pass them around. We'll go ahead and talk. Before she starts, can we make sure how many speakers we're allowed to have left? We want to make sure all the schools get represented if possible.
So I think earlier you said you had four who were going to speak.
Well, we have eight, I think, but if you'll limit us to.
Well, I think, but that's what we asked to say again. So if you tell us.
He's calling all the names. I mean, just because he's calling all the names, there's a word confusion.
Okay, so tell us how many you have and we'll adjust to that.
What school do we need? We have Camp Dick. We'll have Paige Stewart and then John if that's a paying.
We have Lea.
I'll go two minutes. How about that? One minute?
Dawn Mackey and Paige Richards.
Okay.
So Amy's gonna do it really quick.
I'll just do it really fast. So do anybody know that this week is family engagement week? If I know that? No?
I didn't.
Well, it is. And I can't think of a better way to celebrate that than if you stand right here. I'd rather be home with my family, but instead, here I am begging for rights that other parents in a lot of the counties already have. Friends from work, coworkers. I get to watch them leave weekly to go see their kids. Here I am standing there, out, and I don't get to see mine. Good for them, not good for me. And I will say real quick, and you guys can nod your head yes or no, I found a report from a nonprofit, the Northern Kentucky Tribune, and I sent an email to the majority of you. Still, your email wasn't posted anymore, so I couldn't send that to you on the board website. It was not there. Anyway, there is an article that listed 64 schools that are considered certified family-friendly schools. Now, I was surprised to see that our school was included. Anybody else see that? You might check her email today. I guess that shows us a little something that either you all aren't concerned about emails that are being sent or not reading them. But did you all know that our school was not on there? It's not a big surprise. I don't think it's a big surprise, anyway. So enough about that. I've been doing my own research and have joined a Facebook group where other people can share information, photos, events, documents, thoughts, and raise awareness in our community about what has been going on behind our backs. We've been told by many that in the school system, the principal and the safety coordinator, that Garrett County Schools is doing the same as some of the other surrounding counties, which is just not true. We parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles have taken it upon ourselves to do our own research, and none of the information that we've been provided.
Two minutes, Ruth.
We have found not trustworthy. That's my.
Can I ask the board a procedural question before I take my time real quick about this? If a parent brings something that they believe is a violation of a rule or regulation, what is your responsibility to respond to that allegation?
We don't respond to public comment. The board members in a few minutes can respond when it's a board member's.
Okay. I was just wondering with the procedural question. I'm John Mackey. I'm a parent of three children in the Garrett County education system. I have two stepsons, Austin and Scott, senior and a junior, and I have a one-year-old, Bo Aaron, through that Camp Dick Robinson. Aaron, through that Camp Dickinson. I'm here to talk about what everybody else is talking about. No surprise. I'm going to frame it in a different lens, hopefully. If I went around and asked everybody in the room really quick, take 30 seconds, give me a couple memories from your school years. I guarantee everybody would have a bunch. You probably could give me more than you could count in 30 seconds. If I asked you, think back to when your parents were involved, or a grandparent was involved, or a member of the military or a community leader was involved, you could probably tell me a few. I know I could, I'm going to tell you one of them. I can tell you the T-shirt I was wearing, what was on the T-shirt in the color, grandparent's day when I was in kindergarten, 1981. I remember it vividly. I can remember my dad was wearing a factory uniform shirt that was blue, had a white insignia with his name printed on it. I can tell you my grandfather was wearing a pair of red overalls that were dirty, and he was wearing a blue shirt that was a button-up short-clip shirt. And then he was unbelievably tan. He was a farmer, we grew up on a farm, and his skin was so dark, it stood out if he was out in public, he was so dark. I can tell you exactly what they were wearing. That's not the funny thing. The funny thing is I can tell you, the thing I remember most vividly is how white his teeth were. That's weird, right? How white his teeth? Well, you're a dentist. How white his teeth were? And you want to know why? My grandfather was a hard man. He was a soft of the earth man. He did not smile easily. But that day, he was beaming. And he was beaming because he was proud of his son and proud of his grandson, and he was proud to be there and be recognized, and he was proud to be there and show his children and his grandchildren all, at school and in school. I will remember that vividly every time I think of my father and my grandfather, God rest his soul. It'll be probably the first memory I think of, vividly, in school. Everyone in the room probably has that. Everybody that's here in this room right now is probably a parent. We have replicated that tradition and had that up until 2019, the ability to have that same memory and pass it down to our children in school. And now, we are asking, or we're being told, that we cannot pass on that tradition, but we're not being told why. I watched the last few board meetings, and the last one in particular, and I have a few comments, and I ask that we think about it to that lens, that we all have memories. And I assume that you all agree, that if I asked you those questions, you would have those memories? Forty-one years ago, for me, I can remember everything they were wearing, I can remember how his teeth looked. I assume everybody in the room wants to say the same thing. I watched the end of the last board meeting, and I walked away with two feelings. I really didn't, I really didn't know everything that was going on until I watched that. I walked away sad and frustrated for the parents that were here asking questions, and I walked away a little bit embarrassed and sad for your, for this leadership group, that a very simple question was asked, that all it required was a very simple answer, and it would not be answered. Who made this decision? It was asked, and you deflected it. Another person turned around and said, was it the superintendent? And the answer was, ha, well, he may have been involved. I don't know anybody on this board. I assume you all to be good people. That response to me, watching it cold, was dismissive and demeaning. And I bet if you let someone else watch that video, they had no dog in this fight, they didn't know Garrett County, they would walk away the same way. So I hope in thoughtful, thoughtful reflection, maybe you would say, maybe I didn't handle that appropriately. Maybe not, I don't know, I assume you all to be good people, but I was appalled by that a little bit. If you have the authority, if you have been elected and put in a position of authority to make a decision, then you should be accountable to stand up and say, you made that decision. There's no regulation that says you should not tell us who made that decision.
You're a poor man, sir.
If it's not the person who made it, the leadership qualities of this group should answer that simple question. I have a lot more comments, and I know I'm out of time, and it's sad because I don't think what else I would say is offensive or divisive. I think it would be uplifting, and you may not want to hear it, and I'll do it again at some other time, if that's what it takes, or you can allow me a couple, like two more minutes to finish.
No, sir, you're, you're four men, sir.
That tells you something in itself. This decision is important. You are taking away the memories of children. I will remember that memory for the rest of my life. You just celebrated Veterans Day with no veterans. You said you celebrated Veterans Day. My wife is an active-duty veteran right now, active duty. She was at, there was two veterans at our elementary school for Veterans Day.
Please beg the damn lady.
She was one of them, but not because you invited her in. She got there on her own, and I have a picture of my son and my nephew, Bodie Lay, beaming, smiling, so excited that she was there. I hope they remember that for the rest of their lives like I remember the one that I had. But you are taking every possible memory that our kids could have in that same scenario, you are taking it away, and you have not explained why. What is the benefit? What do you guarantee will happen from that decision?
Sir, you're taking time that you haven't been allotted, please. I ask you.
Well, I please ask you all to reconsider your decision and think about my stand.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, sir, I was asking for that comment tonight. What was that comment you asked? Whose decision was it, sir?
Sir, please.
Does anyone in this group have the leadership and the ownership to tell me who made the decision? Is there a rule or regulation that says you cannot make that, that you should not make that? Or would someone please respond? I'll look at you individually. Does anyone want to respond and tell me why you will not answer a simple question that's being asked? Mary, it looks like you want to answer me, but you're afraid to. That is sad.
Thanks, Richards.
It's not being afraid to answer. It's, it's, it's the way a school system works within, and you sound like you have some background. So we work within, so it's, it's not sharing information. And this is going to get worked out if you hope.
We thought it was being worked out.
This is six lines later.
Paige Richards.
I'm pretty sure we were told it was all.
My name is Paige Richards, I'm a mother of two children, Emily Cooper, who did ELS. This is also my first year serving as a parent brand on the site base. I just want to start by saying thank you for giving me time to speak this evening. My concerns and frustrations come from the lack of communication between the schools, the school board, and the parents and guardians. Up until the last board meeting in October, many families thought that not being allowed to volunteer, water stations received awards, numerous other things were due to COVID regulations implemented. That's not the case, though, so our main question is, who made the decision to stop this? Why is it, why was it not a site-based decision for school? Why was it not only decided between principals and superintendent? I feel as though, especially now serving on site base, that my voice and opinion were stripped away. I'm not asking for huge extrajunk activities. My main wish is to be able to watch my children receive their awards and work so hard for the entire school year. My son's first couple years were, he struggled with reading and being very shy. Last year, he came out of his shell, worked so hard to become a great reader. It was disheartening as a mother who worked alongside her child and saw his frustrations and his excitement when he could finally figure out a word. He thrived, finally being back as a person for school, and to see my baby get awards for math, reading, and citizenship, and not being able to be there to cheer him on, to say I was mad was an understatement. According to Waterford.org, studies have shown that family engagement equals student success. Children with families engaged in their education are more likely to earn higher grades, graduate from high school, and a 10-plus secondary education, and develop self-confidence, motivation, and also have better social behavior skills in the classroom. They are also less likely to suffer from low self-esteem or require redirection in the classroom. Also, according to school, the families, parents are made to not feel welcome or they don't know how to be involved. And schools don't try to engage parents because they think we don't want to be involved. You see the cycle. We have heard so many different reasons as to why families aren't being allowed in school, but we see schools such as Woodland Elementary doing donuts with grownups, Julius Marks and Lex Center for putting on performances, White Hall Elementary, Waco Elementary, Jackson City Elementary, and many more in Kentucky took the time to celebrate our veterans. Even our governor got to enjoy celebrating Thanksgiving with our children at school today. So the real question is, who in our district is making the decisions? Pre-COVID, parents who wanted to volunteer could attend a volunteer program in the evening at the beginning of the school year and pay $10 for a background check. And trust me, as a parent, I want to protect my children as much as you all are even more. And I believe many parents that want to volunteer are going to be willing to go back to that. We are just asking for a chance to be there for our children. We want to celebrate each milestone with them. We want to help the teachers with holiday parties. We want to help charter and field trips. We truly want to help make a difference in our children's lives and help make educators' jobs a little easier by being involved. So we're asking the school board to help make a decision, implement a family involvement policy, get feedback from teachers, principals, parents, grandparents, guardians, provide guidelines, regulations, but let families be there to support our children in the success that they can achieve, and thank you.
I would like to speak. It's board members. I would like to speak. It's board members' comments at this time.
I signed up to speak.
Why does she wait this long?
I signed up to speak.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I thought you gave up your time.
I did, but I decided I didn't want to speak. Is that okay with you?
Sure.
Seem offended.
Why am I offended?
I don't know, I'm asking you. I mean, you seem to be a little bit offended. Anyway, let's move on. I think I'll, I'll just want to say to you all tonight that so far, we've been told this isn't a board issue, we've been told this isn't a superintendent issue, we've been told this isn't a principal issue, and we've also been told it's not a site-based decision-making issue. So again, another question for you all, many questions that are not being answered. Whose issue is this? Whose issue is this? Do you know, Mr. Stoll?
I think you do.
You do? I would love to hear why.
Yeah, we got a superintendent comment coming up.
Right. All right. So maybe you'll answer some of these questions that I have specifically directed towards, I'm assuming the whole board, but maybe it's not, you know, maybe we'll be able to figure out who it really is, but you say that at the last board meeting, this is not a policy, there is not a policy that states that parents can't be involved inside the school, there's simply something that says we need to work through a process to do that. I've worked through that process. I've worked through that process about nine years now. I've had background checks and, you know, all the works. So if there isn't a policy that states that this protocol, you know, should be enforced, there's lots of questions of why we can't come into the school. Also, the mention, the process hasn't been followed, so why are we still not allowed inside the school? You know, those are the questions that are lingering that no one is answering. I went and volunteered recently and asked to go to the bathroom and was told I couldn't go to the bathroom. You think that's weird?
Yeah.
I mean, do you see why parents think that's strange? Do you know a wallpaper was brought out for someone to blow their nose in an unsanitary way outside, outdoors? Does that seem reasonable to you all? Those are the questions that we're asking. No one is trying to be unreasonable here, but I feel like this procedure, policy, whatever you want to call it, is very unreasonable. And I would, I think that you all would agree, if you all would finally give some kind of a comment or, you know, contribution to the conversation, that's what we feel the way that we feel. There's many, many things like that, that's just scratching the surface, but that don't add up. They're very strange, they're very odd, they don't make sense to people. In 2019, I had a fifth grader and a kindergartner, and I attended a graduation for my fifth grader and a celebration in the classroom for my kindergartner. So, you know, the only thing that changed was COVID. Safety has always been an issue, gun issues have always been an issue, parents, crazy parents, whatever you want to call the problem or the issue, has always been an issue. It's not changed, nothing's changed, other than COVID, that's it. And it's time to move on. We have many, many counties, as a matter of fact, every county surrounding us has moved on. They are actively, you know, trying to involve families in a meaningful way, in a variety of meaningful ways, and I think that it's time that we do the same.
Thank you very much. Now, board members coming, the board members are coming.
I'll make, I'll make a comment, just because I'm on the, on board.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm not here to become adversarial. None of us want to be in that adversarial situation. Gavin, us probably is maybe a little bit of ultra-conservatism, because first of all, like I said, you don't know me, I don't know you. I grew up here, taught in the school system for 33 years, got a lot of memories.
Yep.
Got a lot of memories, and airport memories.
Of course.
Teacher here, we got educators all in here, and so what can, to say that we're not concerned about it is, is wrong, but at the same time, I can see where it appears to be that as a result of us not answering some of your questions. After the last board meeting, we started talking to the superintendent, then the superintendent started talking to the principals, and so a dialogue is going on. Rest assured, a dialogue is going on to see what is acceptable with the, all the different elements of our educational system. I know patient, asking for patience is tough. I think you've been patient at the same time, but we're, we're still working on it. I assure you, we're still working on it, and I think some of the things that Mr. Stoll will allude to will show that there is work going on. One of the things that I'm scared to death about, and of course, Andrew made reference to it too, and he said, get over it. He can't get over a loss of life. Can't get over a loss of life. And we want to always put that at the, the front of everything, make sure we are protecting our kids. We're not using that as an excuse, we're just using it as one of the many different factors that we try to, to work on.
But it does show like.
Excuse me, I, I think I'm talking right now. Thank you, I gave you your point. And we're going to let Mr. Stoll, you know, go ahead and, and give his comments, but at the same time, know that we're still working on this, and we're taking very seriously the things that you're saying.
We'd love to hear this.
I want to say something.
Superintendent, do you give your.
My great-granddaughter is in a prison. Every morning she goes to school, she's just five years old. She is in a trauma because of, she cannot walk her down to her classroom. She's five years old in preschool, she's praying for her preschool on top of it. And another thing, she has trauma, she goes into panic attacks, I saw it, she has anxiety. She looks at me on Monday, she says, four more days, Mama. Three more, two more, that's sad. That's sad, that child has to go through that. Because she's separated from her, now they're putting it on her little brother to take her to the classroom, and he's traumatized because he has to watch her. So what is wrong?
Excuse me, we're, we're going to cut into the superintendent's comments here, let's let him speak.
Good, Mr. Stoll.
Board is good.
Y'all good?
So appreciate you guys sharing, and I think that we said that at the last board meeting as well, we appreciate the fact that you want to make sure that you have an understanding. I think that there's some misinformation even with what you shared tonight. So my staff has confirmed for me that my email is on the web page. So somebody who says that I'm not available is incorrect. So, Ms. Baker, you had your opportunity. So a couple things that I'll share. Number one, there's been no change in policy. Policy that are in place today were in place in 2019. Following 2019's General Assembly, many districts changed policies or maybe not changed, updated policies. So those policies were changed before many of the people who were in schools as principals were in that role. It was before I was in this role, and that was a situation that we dealt with, but it didn't roll out like a normal policy would because of what you all mentioned earlier, and that was COVID. COVID caused a, a change in us rolling through that process. So if you go back to that, you'll notice that, and one of you mentioned this, is when the, the ad of identifying yourself with an official form of ID went into place. So there is nothing in a policy that says that there can't be events during the school day. There are a couple of things that we would want you to be aware of. One of those things is that we feel like there are two moral imperatives that the school has as a responsibility. One of those is the safety of your children, and you all have referenced that. Before it was ever required, Garrett County's board and Garrett County Schools were ahead of the requirement of having an SRO in every building. So while it's a requirement now for a lot of districts, and you hear a lot of districts struggling with how to make that happen, you all had a district that had that in place well in advance of that. And the board should be complimented for that. I had nothing to do with that. That was before I ever came back. Uh, we have, uh, security vestibules in every building except this one, and they'll be in this one by the end of, uh, Christmas break. We have access control in, uh, I believe just about every area except the board office, and we're less concerned about that than we are your students, uh, and your children for sure. Uh, we have a requirement that doors are locked, and all of that plays into the idea of trying to keep your children as safe as possible. We feel like that's a moral imperative, and we'll want to get better at that all the time. The last thing that we ever want to do is not have your children be as safe as possible. And we know that we have areas that we can continue to get better at in that. The second moral imperative that we have is to provide the best education possible. And both of those things end up playing together. Uh, somebody quoted me as having said that what we saw at CDR in October was a good example of how you can have good instruction during the day and events at night. I, I totally agree. That's what I said. Uh, and we do some of those things because a decision is made over and over about what is the best possible way to provide both of those things. Uh, when I was a principal here, we didn't have the kind of collaboration among our schools that we're now having. And that's a great thing to see happen because that evens the playing field for our students. It makes possible our middle school to have students who are coming from three different locations, but with a similar experience as best they possibly can. If that occurs, then that means the middle school can do a greater job of preparing our students for high school, which means we can do our long-term job, which is moving your student from being preschool or kindergarten all the way through the system. Uh, and I say that this way, all the way through the system, because there's not an endpoint in the system until we arrive at that senior year. Our responsibility is to try to have students ready to go to college, whether that's a four-year or two-year experience, to go to a trade environment if that's something they want to do, to go to the military, or to go directly into the workforce. And one of the things that we shared last month was that in the last assessment results, we were dead center. And that's not where we want to be. Uh, I, I don't take any pride in saying to any of our parents, hey, we're middle of the road. That is better than saying we're at the bottom, but it didn't say that we were at the top. And part of our responsibility is to work as aggressively as we can to help that happen because the people who are benefited by that are your children. And I think all of you would agree with that. Just like you all said earlier, we would agree with some of the things that you're saying. I think you would agree with the two things that I've said there. I think you agree that we want, that you want us to keep your children safe, and that you want us to educate your children. So as we're doing those things, thinking through how to do that as best as possible is something that we need to do. There wasn't ever, in my opinion, a decision made that said, parents can't come during the day. There was an idea of how can we look at different ways of doing things? So how can we protect instructional time every day? We have an obligation to do that. We have a certain amount of time that we're supposed to provide instruction on a daily basis. And then how can we make things available for parents? I do believe that we have parents who are entering, entering our buildings uh, and providing opportunities for our students as they volunteer. Uh, at the end of the last meeting, I suggested that we would continue to love to have parents who, who want to volunteer. For us, that's a way to help your children grow and continue to move forward. If you'll remember, I asked, how many of you would be willing to come and be a substitute for us? I mean, if you could only come one day a week, that would be tremendous. Because what we want to make sure that happens if, if a teacher is out is that we have a quality person in there to continue moving things forward. That's our goal, is for that to occur. So the decision that you keep looking for and saying, who's making this decision, is a decision that's made over and over on any given day. What's the best thing that we can do? Our policy says that if you want to visit the school, you arrange that with the principal. Interestingly enough, that was the policy before 2019. I can't tell you that it was implemented. It was. If you go back and look, it says, if you'd like to visit a classroom, contact the principal, and they can help set that up.
Nope, never.
Didn't say you did it, did I? I said that was the policy. So whether or not a policy was implemented and, and fulfilled, I can't speak to that. So on any given day, a decision that is made, may it be a different decision the next day, based on what would be in the best interest of everybody involved. So if one of our schools, and it could be any of the five, wanted to host an event during the day, there are things that they can do. So I'll use an extent, as an example, something that we were questioned about, uh, recently. The high school held a college and career day. They brought in sixty-seven individuals. The question that we got was not why that event occurred, it was a question of why there wasn't a printed badge. And it was a fair question because a picture was taken, and they couldn't see a printed badge. Uh, I went back and looked at the policy to see if we had done what we were supposed to do, or if we had not done that. And again, the policy says this, contact the principal. That had been done. Arrange that with the principal, have the principal's permission to do that. That was done. You have to check in. So what they did was different than what you would normally do. They brought the individuals directly into the gym at the high school so that they never entered the hallways with the students. There was a restroom available to everyone there. They fed them in that location. So they maintained total separation so that they could provide an educational experience for children at high school so that they could have an idea of what going to college might look like, what a career might look like. As we stood there that day, uh, India Harvey, who helps put that, helps put that together, was standing beside me. I said, you know, this would be, we're messing this up. We need to figure out how we do this at the middle and the elementary. So we believe in the spring, what you're gonna see is an opportunity for you and your children to attend an event at the middle school, where the middle school will be, uh, the host, and the high school will bring over their pathways. And then we'll ask those community groups to come in and surround the pathway that would lead to their job, and allow the elementary students to see that as well, so it's a bigger picture of what's going on. Those are the kinds of decisions that are being made within the school day and within the school experience. And it's not to say that we don't want you involved because last night you had an event at, at CDR. We've had experiences. The difference that I think that we're dealing with is whether the event is during the day or whether the event's at night. You talked about flexibility. That's a fair question, okay?
Not tradition.
It's a fair question to ask about that, and we will continue to look at that. And again, if we, just like the high school did, if there's somebody who wants to host something during the day, there's a way to do that. So there's not something that says that that cannot occur. So that's where we land with those two types of issues that we feel like are really our responsibility. Safety and education in the best way possible. Please understand, and I, I say this with as much sincerity as I possibly can, it's virtually impossible to make a decision that makes everybody happy. You all know that. We, we know that if, if I cancel school tomorrow morning, I'll get a phone call from somebody said, why'd you cancel? If I, if it snowed tomorrow morning, I should have, I just got to get there with snow tomorrow morning. And I canceled school, somebody will call and say, why'd you cancel? If it snowed tomorrow morning and I didn't, I'd get another phone call that said, why didn't you cancel? We understand that. We understand that if a decision is made that you disagree with, that we have offended you in some fashion with that decision. Uh, we'll continue to try to do a better job of making people feel as comfortable as they can and provide experiences for you. The one thing that will never happen, and, and I want to be clear about this, the one thing that will never happen, at least while I have the ability to say anything about it, is we'll never have a free-for-all where anybody can show up and do anything they want to at any time.
I don't think anybody's asking for that.
I, I didn't say.
Nobody's asking.
Didn't say you were. Don't think I said you were. I said the one thing that won't happen. I'll go back to, Mr. Hurd was my assistant principal when I first came, and there was not the kind of experiences going on in schools back then that there were today, but if we had somebody who didn't belong, we would still check because we would have wanted to maintain safety. Today, we have a better opportunity to make sure that we do a good job of maintaining that safety, and at the same time, being able to do a good job of providing that instruction. So, uh, if, if I can say this on behalf of the board, the board is aware of everything that I've shared with you tonight. I've shared this information with them. Our principals knew that I was gonna share this today, today. So that's, uh, to share with you that I think we're in a similar spot doesn't mean we can't get better. There's not a time that somebody says to us, I think this, that we won't consider that.
I think you're gonna have grandparents say.
I, I will use as an example that we had an individual contact us recently and make a recommendation for something. And I can't believe that in the time that I was at Garrett County High School, when it's at the, it was at the original location, that this never happened, that I thought of this. Some of you will remember that I was stupid enough to stand on Maple Avenue and direct traffic. Uh, and, and I would do that in the mornings because we wanted to make sure we got cars in and out. It was less about the safety idea and more about the flow. Somebody contacted us and said, you know, you ought to have a crosswalk at the middle school because people cross from the middle school side to the church side. Never once it occurred to me. But if you drive down there today, you'll see that there's a crosswalk. So when there is a recommendation and we can find a way to make those things happen, that's what we'll do. Uh, I appreciate what the city did because we contacted the city and asked for their help of that, and they provided that. But that was because somebody said to us, you need to think about this. So we'll continue to think about the comments that you've made tonight. Again, we appreciate that. It's time for the board to move forward with this. This was my comment section. I, board members, let me say to you that this is normally when I would share with you my update. That's still available on the website, I mean, uh, on the links that you have, and I think you all received them the other day. Next thing I'd like to talk about is the.
I ask a particular question. Is it okay to ask a particular question?
Not just.
Did you clarify if there were badges on the people at the high school? You said.
The needs assessment that I'm required to give you guys by December one is being done tonight. Uh, we met in October with the various schools to make sure that we had that information for you. That we provided it to you. It doesn't give you a, an explanation of how we might address those. What it gives you is an explanation of the requests that have been made. So that's available on the site for anybody who would like to see that. At this time, I'd like to get an update if we can for, uh, relative to construction, so whether it's Trace Creek or, uh, Samacar, you'd like to give an update about, uh, the next steps that we have with, uh, the, the project.
All right, good quick update on the bid Thursday. Um, pull up their turnout from the, uh, bid prior. Um, very happy with the turnout. As you'll see later on, um, the low bidder was seven earth movers LLC. Um, we did an evaluation of their bid, sat down with them, went over the bid. We felt comfortable recommending them to do the work with the project. I'll turn it over to Brad here for some update on the next phases.
So we're continuing to progress with the, uh, the buildings, built facilities of the ten ninety zero portion of the project. Uh, we'll be leaving the staff after Thanksgiving to start going through the interior pit, pit, and mission selections. Um, at this point, we're still on target to get drawings and it's, we can go to bid. There being else going on, pushback, we're still on, on target as we've, we've been promising. Um, but, uh, I guess next move forward, we'll get our selection of the, uh, you know, hiring of the, uh, the, uh, earthwork movers, that'll be the starting of project rolling. There will, we're continuing to build one of those over the next year, year and a half.
The next thing for me is that you have personnel changes available to you, just like you normally do on any given week, or any given month, sorry.
Thanks, sir. All right, item three is reports, and item A is Kentucky Board of Education update. Joanna Stevens. Another nice panel.
Thank you. And so the state board, we met in October in Russellville, Kentucky, um, at their new, um, ATC building. Um, we had a presentation from former Garrett superintendent, current Logan County superintendent, Paul Mullins. And he shared, um, a lot about their ATC program, so that services Russellville schools, Logan County schools, and Todd County schools. And then he also shared their portrait of a learner that they're implementing in Logan County. Um, and he, health-wise, he did look a little better than the last time I had seen him, so I think he's recovering there. Um, so our meeting was three hours away. Um, personally, I didn't mind this little trip because, um, my grandparents are from Logan County and they reside in Logan County. And my mom graduated from Logan County school, so it was nice if I had to drive to the other side of the state. At least I got to see my grandparents, um, between our meetings. Uh, Garrett County was highlighted in the commissioner's report, um, with our new program that we had. And so that was exciting to see, um, positive mention in the commissioner's report chair. Uh, we spent quite a bit of time, um, talking about our twenty twenty-three, um, board goals. Um, and these are just a summary of them. On the PowerPoint, you can click at the top the link to see the full goal of each one. Um, probably that third bullet is where we spent a lot of our conversation, is that we do have a teacher crisis, um, and so what can we do as a board? Um, what can we, um, advocate for with our legislatures to help, um, recruit more teachers? And so that we aren't in the situation that we're in right now. And the first bullet, the United We Learn, um, I will talk more about that one, um, along with the profile of a learner too. Uh, but those were the board goals, um, and those go along with our priorities and for the upcoming legislative sessions. Uh, there is a lot of alignment there going through those. Um, something that did come up is that they would discuss, um, for student teachers getting a financial support, so almost like a big internship. Not sure on how that will work, but, um, really trying to increase the educator workforce there. But those will be, uh, the current school funding formulas. Um, and that kind of goes along with some other topics we discussed with charter schools. Uh, but also the CEAC formula shifting from, um, the daily attendance to, to the enrollment that we have. Looking at those. And they did adapt our statewide portrait of a learner. This is still a proposal. And, uh, I think from our last meeting, the part that was added was the creative contributor. And so there's six things that we're looking for that when students graduate, um, high school, um, that they are, um, all of these things. I do like that with, some districts are using portrait of a graduate. And, but as a state, we're gonna shift that to portrait of a learner. I think that makes the whole district buy-in more. Um, because these are things that we want to start on as soon as students enter, um, preschool. Not just, I think portrait of a graduate makes us think more high school when they're getting their diploma. Um, but there is some confusion, uh, on how everything is going to tie in together. So we have the United We Learn, we have the Portrait of a Learner, we have deeper learning, we have project-based learning, and kind of seeing how everything is going to work. And as a teacher, it, it's a lot. It's overwhelming. Um, the superintendents felt that. Um, so right now, um, there was, someone shared a good analogy of it's like a spaghetti sauce. We have all these good ingredients. Um, and we're just gonna have to wait to see how they kind of simmer together. Um, this month, the United We Learn council was announced, I think a couple of weeks ago. They have their first meeting the end of the month. So I think as that council forms, I do think United We Learn will be the big umbrella, and everything under it will be the Portrait of a Learner, deeper learning, project-based learning. Um, and I think we will just have to have patience to see how all of those things work together. And then we got into the charter school regulation. And I had to do a lot of research on this before our meeting to understand everything, um, that was going on. Um, being honest, it was a very uncomfortable, um, it was very uncomfortable meeting because, um, the legislative passed lots of regulations, lots of statutes that really left the board with no choice, that we had to do things, um, whether the board believed they were in the best interest of students or not, and that's a tough decision to make. Um, but by law, by the oath that they took as board members, um, there was no other option but to adopt the charter school, um, regulations based on what our lawmakers did. Um, there's some legal issues that are going to come up, that have already come up with the board policies that were created. Um, most of those go from the funding, the equitable funding that is there, um, parallel systems of having schools in the same district. Um, as far as how this affects Garrett County, um, this is based on my interpretation, and I'm not a policy expert on this. So right now, if a district has more than seventy-five hundred students, um, a charter school could be created without board approval. Garrett County would fall in below seventy-five hundred students, so a charter school would need board approval before they could be established. Um, but the local tax money transferring to charter schools, again, lots of legal issues. Um, but the board really, there was no choice, no decision to make, other than to just fulfill what the lawmakers um, passed in their session. Um, all charter schools will be required to use the same data reporting that, um, we use in our schools from UNIS and campus to all of those things, so that data can be collected there. Um, this is where we spent the bulk of our meeting time. Um, so it was, it was uncomfortable, um, and it was hard. Um, other things that we talked about, um, we had an E S, E P S B report. And they are looking at the qualifications to be a teacher. Um, they had. They had some data on if they lower the praxis score by one point, like the passing score by one point, how many more teachers that would be that could enter the field. And then they are considering a multiple measure component where teachers would have, instead of it just depending on a test, it would be a point system. The points would come from the GPA, student teaching and the praxis. So there would be just multiple measures, multiple opportunities to increase the number of people in our profession. We did the commissioner's evaluation. So that was a first for me behind the board. But evaluating the commissioner, looking at his group goals and the direction he wants to lead the board and our state in. So in addition to the board meeting, since I've been here, I've also gone to the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics Conference. This was our first one in person since 2019. And so I thank the board for your support. This was held in Los Angeles. And getting to present to teachers from around the country, from around the world, there were other countries represented, about things happening in Garrett County. It's pretty special and that was neat to share with my students that, you know, the work that we're doing in Lancaster, other teachers are learning from it and collaborating there. So I thank you all for your support and getting to go. These are some of the things that are big focus at the national level when it comes to math education and some of the sessions that were there. But a big shift in our thinking that it's okay in society to say, I'm not a math person. It's not okay, it's okay to say, I'm not good at math. It's not okay to say, I'm not a good reader. But that's, we don't, that's not acceptable. So how do we shift that? And how do we shift what it means to do math? So making math more of a verb like reading and writing. So we have a meeting coming up soon, the first week of December. This one is in Frankfurt. And then I'm also serving on a study group with the National School Board talking about math improvement after the NAEP results came out. What can we do nationally? And if there's representatives from all the states, they are talking about things in math education that we can be working on. So any questions?
Thank you, appreciate it. Very good, appreciate that. All right, item B is a treasures report.
Most of you have the opportunity to review that. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Mrs. Coffee is in training this week, so she's not here. But happy to share any information that I can.
Good. Item C is bond potential update.
So your bonding potential increased slightly, very slightly, but it increased slightly. So we'll continue to provide that through the process so that everybody is up to speed on that.
Item D is SRO update.
Sergeant Miracle.
Good evening, board. I see that my, this is basically a form that is accumulation of reports that I ask from all prospective SROs at the schools. And the last sheet basically compiles all this and it just gives you a brief overview of activity that has happened at each school in the district. So the very last sheet that basically kind of gives you a percentage of incidences that's happened in our district for the month of October. Again, I have it broken down in three sections, a proactive, a reactive and a deficit. And the proactive, this is again where we go throughout the schools and examine open doors, windows, just look for general security issues within each school. We had roughly over 100% activity increase over the month of October versus September. We had seven reported proactive activities. For the month of September, we had a uptick to 19. This is stemming from issues such as doors that were not able to be secured because of either hinges, things of this nature, or simply due to the fact that maybe someone had left the door unlocked or unsecured. So seeing their frequency does not bother me. I think it just shows that the SROs are out there doing what they're supposed to be doing, lots requested of them. It's really of no concern. Reactive, we had two additional incidences that happened in the month of October versus September. There's specifics such as charges and things of this nature, contact with whether it be a family member, negative contact with a child. These are issues that, of course, the great work of the SROs address. Jeff Ryman, of course, being at the middle school, he gets quite a bit busy over there. But I still want to give a shout out to all the SROs and all the schools. They're really shining through and doing an excellent job. As far as the deficits, we still have a few things on the plate that we're sorting through, that we are requesting that would only help us further our jobs and make the schools even safer. But other than that, it's just a bunch of numbers. But we're out there in the trenches keeping the kids safe.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that. All right, item E is bills is presented.
You all receive these on a weekly basis. You respond to those, this is the collective of that gets you to review it. Makes it possible for anybody in the community to take a look at that as well.
Thanks, sir. And item four is a consent agenda. And I hope all board members have been able to look over all of these. And if there's nothing that, send a red flag with any of you, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Dr. Lamb made a motion, will I have a second? Ms. Davis, any further questions or comments? All in favor, let it be known, but lifted in. All board members were in favor. The consent agenda is adopted. Item five is the action agenda. And item A is to approve Baird Municipal Resilience Services Agreement.
You all have used Baird as your physical agent. And as we get ready to move into this process, we need to engage them in a letter officially. So it's my recommendation that you approve the service agreement with Baird Financial.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Perry made a motion, will I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Dr. Lamb, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let it be known, but lifted in. All board members were in favor. The service is agreed to. Item B is to approve bid for earthwork on the Garrett County High School project.
So you heard the recommendation a little bit earlier from Trace Creek in your live packet, not just online, but in your live one is their recommendation. I want to make sure that you saw that it was their recommendation. Certainly that's why you retained them as your construction management. They have chosen the lowest bid from the five that they received. So it would be my recommendation that you approve seven earth boomers for the GCHS project.
All right, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion? Ms. Davis made a motion, will I have a second?
I'll second the question.
Mr. Perry, second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, let it be known, but lifted in. All board members were in favor. Then the motion is approved. Item C is to approve Energy and Environmental Cabinet Agreed Order.
Couple of months ago, we shared with you that there was an agreement, an order that we were going to have to enter relative to CDR's wastewater treatment plant. We asked for the ability to try and negotiate the fine that would be coming to a lower amount. We were able to do that and moved it from $8,000 to $3,000. Then we received this final agreed order. I shared it with your board attorney, asked him to review it, make sure that we have issues. Tonight, I would recommend that you approve this Energy and Environment Cabinet Agreed Order as we attempt to address the issues exist in CDR with our wastewater treatment plant.
Thanks, sir. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Dr. Lamb made a motion, will I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let it be known, but lifted in. All board members were in favor. The Environmental Cabinet Agreed Order is agreed to. Item D is to approve donations for winter coat drive through KASA.
So if you'll recall, when the flood occurred, we indicated to you that we'd like to do some things after the event because lots of things were happening during the event. The superintendents were telling Kentucky Association of School Administrators that what was really going to be missing for students were jackets, coats for the winter. So we are a collection site for that. But we also would like to recommend to the board that you make a donation out of your general fund of $1,000 to that group so that they can purchase additional coats for students in the eastern part of the state. And that would be my recommendation, a $1,000 donation to KASA for the winter coat drive for eastern Kentucky families be approved tonight.
Thanks, sir. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Shalom.
Mr. Hart, made the motion, will I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis, second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, let it be known, but lifted in. The motion is agreed to. Item D is to approve shortened day for a CDR student.
Anytime that we have a medical recommendation and an ARC that meets and requests a shortened school day for a student, we have to ask for your permission to do that. Tonight, I would ask you to approve a shortened school day for a CDR student.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Dr. Lamb made a motion, will I have a second? Ms. Davis, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let it be known, but lifted in. The motion is agreed to, the shortened day is approved. Item six is German.
Make motion with German.
Mr. Perry made a motion, will I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart, second. All in favor, let it be known, but lifted in. The motion is agreed to, we are adjourned.